Well, good evening. We've got our special meeting of the Federal Way City Council for June 2nd, 2015. We started at 5:15 PM for the commission interviews. We are coming back into action at this time for a study session for eighty-five percent design for the Performing Arts and Events Center. And at this time, I will invite our project manager, Will Appleton, to get us started. After we hear from Will, we'll have some citizen comment and then council discussion and questions.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Good evening, deputy mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to be before you this evening to provide an update on the Performing Arts and Events Center. We're approximately eighty-five percent through design at this point, and it's a good opportunity just to bring this forward, give you an update on the schedule, budget, and a brief project description in the front end just for the benefit of our community for those folks who are not quite as intimately familiar with this project. So, I just would like to quickly go through where the project is located. It's actually, it's in our downtown core. It's located at the corner of South 316th Street and Twentieth Avenue South. And you can see here, it's shown as Town Center 1. And I've blown it up here and actually shown the layout of the facility on that corner. And it's adjacent to what, to the, to the future Town Park or Town Center 2, which is the Downtown Park, and Town Center 3, which is the old Target Site, which will be a development which will take place following the development of the PAC. To go through a little bit of a project description, where we're at and what we will be constructing, we have a facility that's approximately forty-one thousand square feet in size. Within that, we have approximately twenty-four hundred square feet of kitchen and support area in this location. There's a plaza and outdoor events area that's programmed for the landscaped area out in front of the facility on the south end. We have adequate onsite parking, one hundred and seventy-six spaces, as well as adequate, as well as additional offsite parking for this facility. Looking at the first floor, which is shown here, the ground floor level of the facility, we have approximately eight thousand square feet of meeting space. That meeting space is broken up into a very large lobby area, combined with two breakout-type meeting or educational rooms to the side. There's also a seven-hundred-seat theater. And within that, approximately five hundred of the seats are on the ground floor. And then, shown here on the mezzanine level, approximately two hundred seats in the balcony seating. Additionally, there's a nine-hundred-square-foot, approximately, meeting space that sits above the entry area on the mezzanine level. So, it sits right above the main entry to the facility, which is at this location. Also, within the facility is all the back-of-stage or back-support facilities and offices that, that allow this facility to function, and that's located on the backside, as well as a delivery area shown here for product coming into the facility, both for the kitchen as well as supporting the theatrical events and conference events for the facility. So, why are we building this facility? Well, our project objectives really are to support theatrical performances, conventions and conferences, a Native American culinary arts and education program. We're supporting the overall arts and education within the community, concert performances, and any kind of special events as well. But furthermore, this facility is also going to become a community focal point. It's going to bring jobs to our community. It's really a redevelopment catalyst for this area, for our downtown. And I think it's really going to paint Federal Way as a destination, a place to come to. And so, this is a very important investment that our community is making. The project schedule. At present, we're working on completing the design and bid documents. And as I said, we're approximately eighty-five percent complete and we're rapidly approaching a hundred percent. We expect to have that completed by the end of July. We expect to bid the project on August 17th, and bidding will remain open until September 9th. We will then return to council for authorization to award the project once we have opened the bids, evaluated the bids, and come forward with a recommendation. Once council has authorized a word for the project, then building permits will be issued, and the contract award slash construct, the start of construction is expected to happen in September, October timeframe. Construction completion, we're expecting for winter of 2017. That's essentially December 2016, January of 17 kind of timeframe. It's going to be weather-dependent. It may slip a bit depending on how, how the weather plays out in 2016. But we would expect it to be completed in the winter of 2017. That's our target. With respect to project budget, we have recently received an updated project cost estimate that was, that is as recent as May 15th. Based on that cost estimate, this project remains within the project, the overall approved project budget. So, what's being shown here is where we're at with respect to project design development. We have budgeted five million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for that task. We are very much within budget on that task. A good portion of that has already been spent. However, a portion of that will continue to be spent as we move along through construction as support from our architects as well as our project manager. For the current construction cost estimate, it's being pegged at twenty-five million, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This is an increase from the estimate that we received in November 2014. It has gone, the costs have gone up, which we fully expected. However, as I, as I pointed out, we're still within, within the approved budget for the project. Construction management and inspections, those fees have been already pre-negotiated. So, we know that that's the amount that we'll be spending on that, and that, that amount of money will be spent over the course of construction. And then, our construction contingency or what remains is approximately five hundred and fifty thousand. Actually, if you do the, do the math there, it's a little closer to six hundred thousand that we would have left for that. So, the good news is that we remain within that target. However, we will not know exactly what the cost to construct this facility is until we receive the bids. And it's, it's important to keep that in mind. We may very well be under, we could be over. We won't know until we, until we actually get the bids. Along the, along that point, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the factors that will be influencing the final cost of this project moving forward. So, the first is, these are some of the alternates that are not included in the project budget. And so, if, if we come in under budget, we may elect to add this as a design element. If we come in over budget, we still may elect to add this. That, that, that question will be asked to council at the appropriate time. But this is a water feature, which is shown here in this area. That's one item that's on the table that's being considered and that we're keeping as, in our, kind of our back pocket as an alternate. Another alternate that we would like to also incorporate into this project budget allowing is an orchestra lift, which is depicted here in the, in the lower right-hand corner, and the associated cost with that. We also have added, keep in mind, that we've added a full kitchen to the project. That's depicted here in the upper right-hand corner. And that was originally not anticipated in, in the, in the original budget. But we're going ahead and incorporating that as an alternate and actually moving forward on the design, and that will be bid, that will be part of the bid package when it goes out. Another very important item to keep in mind is that, and I, and I believe I've, you've, you've heard this, I guess I'll reinforce it. Construction activity in Seattle, construction activity in the Puget Sound is, is unusually high. It's, it's, it's a very, very hot market right now with respect to construction. There's, I'm being told more than thirty cranes right now building high-rises in the Seattle, greater Seattle area. So, the market is hot. It's a very tight market. So, we would expect, given that, that when we go out to bid, it's possible there could be variance in, in, in our numbers of plus or minus five percent. And this is again, just kind of a best guess. So, it's just a heads-up. Market is hot, remains hot. So, and, and, you know, the good news is, we're aware of it. I still think that our estimate is conservative, and I'm still very hopeful that we'll be able to come within budget on this project. And the last item that could significantly influence final costs are change orders. And so, this is something that we have a little more control over than, say, the hot construction market in Seattle. And I'm happy to say that the council has made the decision to go with an excellent design team in L&amp;M. We have an excellent project management, construction management group in Lorax. And really, it, it is, the onus is on us and myself to make sure that we project manage this successfully to minimize any change orders, and I think we're in a strong position to do that. I think the mayor's decision to go through and, and have the directors sitting at a committee and reviewing this project on a weekly basis has also done wonders with respect to making sure that we're all on target, the design is coming together wholly, and, and that we're successful in minimizing any, any change orders. So, that we do have control over, and I will say, I'll, I'll do my best to make sure we minimize that number. So, in conclusion, the project remains on schedule with bidding planned for August. Project construction costs continue to be in line with the approved budget. And again, actual costs for construction will not, will not be known until bids are received and evaluated. And at that time, we would be back before you again telling you what the bid numbers are and ask for authorization at that point. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Councilmember Maloney, Honda, and then Duke Low, and I think we'll probably go through it, but let's start with Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation, Will. Appreciate it. I just have two questions. You mentioned that construction cost estimates are up right now. Can you give me an idea about what the difference is from the most recent, the most recent cost estimates?
So, with the most recent estimate, in May 15th, we saw, we, we had a contingency of approximately two million dollars in this project. About one-point-five million of that was consumed. And so, that is directly related to cost escalation between those estimates.
Okay, thank you. And on the, the optional items, the water feature and the orchestra pit specifically, if we don't add those upfront, can we add them later?
Yes, yes, we could do that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I was gonna ask that question also. But is there an additional cost to add those later, and do you know what those costs would be? And for the kitchen? Does the, for the program that we're anticipating, the kitchen is a requirement, I would imagine?
I'll answer your second question first. Yes, for the kitchen, we will, we will need the full kitchen. That is why it is, it will actually be incorporated into the bid documents and be part of that initial bid that you'll see. So, the full kitchen is definitely going to be, will be moving forward on that. The, to answer your first question, we have, we have taken the necessary steps to kind of do some pre-plumbing for the water feature at a minimal cost. So, we've designed that in where we've stubbed and allowed for utilities. And then, similarly, with the orchestra pit, what we've done is we've designed it such that we can bring in that mechanical piece of equipment, and it will fit in and, and function without having to do any modifications to the building. And so, that is definitely a future add. There's actually an additional pit area that we're digging out and excavating that if we don't go forward with the purchase of the, of the lift, that pit area will be kind of covered over, and so, it'll be, it'll remain there until, until we do move forward with the lift. I think that as this, as this program, as the program evolves and as this facility becomes more heavily used and, and the orchestra grows, I think the orchestra lift is going to be a necessity. I don't think it's an option, but it may not be needed the first year. Likely would be needed, say, the third or fourth year. So, in summary, both of those things, we've, we've done some pre-design and pre-planning, and there won't be a, a large additional cost to add them in. We won't be having to bust anything up or break anything to, to fit it in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Duke Low, then Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and then Councilmember Rosalsky.
You said the contingency was about five hundred and fifty thousand?
At this point, given, given the numbers, and, and in order to keep it within budget, that's what we propose, is that the contingency is at five hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm a little concerned about that, having constructed housing projects
Right.
with low-income housing tax credits, and so, I know about tax credits and everything. But I do know that you try to, you try to, to anticipate everything that comes up, but I have never anticipated everything. Something always comes up, and that seems to me a little bit low.
Yes, it's, it's probably a little lower than we would, than we would feel comfortable with. It's, as I said, if you, if you work the numbers, it's, it's a little closer to six hundred thousand. I'd probably like it to be a little closer to a million. Depending on where the bids come in at, we may very well have that million-dollar contingency within our budget.
Well, again, that's the other thing. You have to be careful with these bids too. Just because somebody comes in low doesn't mean that they're going to stick within that, so.
Right. And then, also, when we evaluate the bids, staff will be coming forward with a recommendation on that contingency based on, based on the, our consultant's evaluation of the bids to say, hey, you know, we do feel comfortable with a million dollars, or we do feel comfortable with six hundred thousand, and here's why. Or, we may come forward at that point and ask for a larger contingency.
I, I would feel much comfortable looking at a larger contingency now because you never can tell what's going to go wrong until you start breaking ground. Everything on paper is wonderful, but when you start to build it, different things come up that no one can actually plan for. And I have built over sixty million dollars worth of housing projects, so I know what I'm talking about.
I agree with you.
And so, I would feel a lot more comfortable with a larger number in the contingency. We don't have to spend it.
Yes.
I mean, the goal would be not to spend it, but there are times when you've got no choice. And if we don't have it in the budget, then what do we do?
Absolutely.
Just my, just my thoughts.
No, it's a great observation and, and definitely something that, as I said, when we're, when we're, when staff is back in front of you with the actual bid number, if that bid happens to be right on target with where our estimate is, we may very well have a recommendation where we're asking for additional funding to allow for a larger contingency. And, and, and at that time, I would have a full justification and reasoning behind that and put that in front of council for a decision.
Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Will. Very thorough and very clear. I had intended to ask for more clarification on the orchestra pit and lift, and I believe you made that clear, that the pit is actually there. It is the lift that, that may come later. So, I appreciate that. But I, I do want to make sure we have enough time for, for audience questions too. So, I will reserve my questions for later.
All right. Councilmember Rosalsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Will, for the presentation. I'm really happy with the progress I'm seeing so far based on, on what you've presented here today. So, our, our, our big job here is to find, you know, is to go out and get bidders. And the city bids dozens and dozens of projects and things throughout the year with varying results on bidders actually coming to, you know, to the table. So, with the hot market that we're having right now in the construction in the, in the Puget Sound area, two questions. Number one, have there been any, has there been any interest expressed by any construction companies out there knowing that, that this is coming along? And number two, what's your prognosis for, you know, for the number of bidders that we may wind up with?
So, to answer your first question, yes, there has, there have been several inquiries about this project. It's just, it's still a little early, believe it or not, a little early in the process. But there have been, I think, I, I think I've had three inquiries on this directly. Your second question, really the approach that we're going to take, that I've asked Lorax Partners, who's very familiar with builders in the Seattle area that build these types of projects, is we're gonna, we're gonna be getting out early onto the street to get this project out there. And, and in a sense, kind of a pre-advertising, if you will, build up a little bit of a froth and, and interest in this project. I, you know, I would guess that we would have on the order of five to six bidders at least on this project. I, I don't know, PJ Santos with Lorax Partners is here. I don't know, PJ-
Would he give you a chance to say something?
And he, he might be able to better answer your question, what's your thought on it?
The first thought is, we're at extreme situation in Seattle, right? Where we're building thirty cranes. It's incredible. But with that, we're not using the same supply of human beings as in contractors as before. These people have grown their businesses. So, now we actually have more construction firms with more people in Puget Sound than we did five years ago. So, those companies want to keep working. And most of the stuff that they're doing right now is speculative development. So, it's new apartment high-rises mostly, or it's office buildings. Those companies actually would love these kind of size thirty-million-dollar bites when they have a few hundred-million-dollar projects. I think this will fit in a little bit differently into their portfolio of projects. So, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic we can get some excitement. Yes, my partner and I know a lot of different contractors in town. We're gonna bang on them, but it doesn't mean they necessarily bid. All we can do is make sure that all the appropriate-fit contractors we know have the word that this is coming and it's in, coming in August.
Okay, good, good. All right. Thank you, PJ.
Councilmore, more?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I actually just had some comments and, and wanted to say thank you to, to the group that's in the audience right now, Performing Arts and Events Center. I know they've worked quite hard on, on, what's the word I'm looking for? Fundraising aspects, and so, just wanted to reach out and just say thank you. And Will, thank you for all your work, and, and just wanted to say thank you to, to the mayor's office and the chief of staff. I know I've been really focused on, on my questions in regards to community workforce development and energy efficiencies. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to Brian for answering a lot of my questions. That is a focus of mine, and just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Rosaloff?
Thank you. With the contingency-
With the contingency funds that councilmember Duclair was talking, would, a lot of times when we have presentations to the LUTC and with all the other projects that we've seen, I think it's a 10 percent contingency, is it? So why is this project different, or why is it not at that level?
I think, and you're correct, in many public works projects, the contingency asked for is approximately 10 percent. And it would be great to have a 10 percent contingency with this project as well. I think that we really need to, again, understand what the number is to construct the project, and then at that time, we can better define the contingency. What I'm showing up here as a contingency is essentially kind of what's left over in, in the budget, what remains, and what we have available. That number will change with certainty. And I think it's going to be our responsibility, staff's responsibility, that when we do provide council with that number to make the decision on whether to award, that at that time, we come forward with what we think is a responsible contingency. And that number is likely to be, I would say, most certainly higher than $550,000.
Thank you.
All right. Council, before I, I think we've got a couple of comments. Why don't we turn to those at this stage? Kathy, Kathy McCabe.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to defer to the public comment in the general meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. And H. David Kaplan. Okay. All right. And we've, we've actually have Dana Turcoat, who has submitted a letter, but what, should we save that for the special, for the regular meeting as well? Okay. So let's do that, all right? Council, any other questions about this is, agenda item is on for, at the portion of our business.
Authorization to award.
Authorization to award.
Yes, sir.
I'm just taking a look at the council business. Eighty-five, seven D, it's on toward the latter part of the meeting. Eighty-five percent design approval and authorization to bid. So, council, any other questions about where we're at right now in regard to Councilmember Rosowski?
Yeah, yeah, mayor, thank you. One more question, as long as we have a few more minutes here. So this, I take it that when this is completed, if, if we continue to move this project forward, tonight's an important step there. This is an open, open campus, right? This is a completely open campus. There's no security or anything around, around the PAC, right?
So security elements will be incorporated into the building, and we're also in the design stage contemplating security elements, specifically cameras for the exterior of the facility as well.
Okay.
So most certainly key-carded locks, cameras on the interior, cameras on the exterior. I'm not sure whether you're thinking.
Well, where I'm, where I'm going is the water feature. So if, if it's an open campus, we could have kids, for example, riding bikes around and riding into that area, accessing the water feature. So I'm, I'm a little concerned on our exposure or liability from that standpoint with a, with a open water feature. That, that's where I was going at.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think in this case, it's a, it's a reflecting pool, so I don't think that the feature is, is very deep. Although it wouldn't preclude someone from putting bubbles in it or something of that nature.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so it's, it's, it's nothing like a.
Yeah, good idea, Will. Not to put that idea out there, but.
Actually, actually, at the entrance to Ocean Shores, they have a water feature, and periodically it does, it comes up nice sudsy.
It happens in Edmonds, too. You know, with the turnaround there.
Yeah, it's actually kind of nice-looking when it happens.
Exactly. I'm going to, I'm going to own that one.
For all those junior high students who are going to be in high school soon, all right, all right. Council, any other questions? All right, we're in recess until the general meeting in 10 minutes.